Good evening and welcome to a regular meeting of the East Line Ad Hoc Committee for Short Term Rentals. Let's rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm not seeing any public here for public delegations, so I believe we can move on from Agenda Item Number Two. Third item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of our regular meeting of January 6th. That was last week, last Monday. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Paul. Okay. Any questions, corrections?
I think just a correction, I believe John was absent.
It does actually say that. It does actually say absent.
For John.
Oh, in front of the thing. My mistake. My mistake, I'm sorry.
And Brooke, you had sort of resent them with a change of time.
Yes, I'm okay. I was like a little medicated.
That's okay. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, that's correct. Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any... I think that's pretty unanimous. Okay. All right, reports of co-chairs. I have nothing to report tonight. And Gary could not be here, Gary Cachello, so he won't be reporting. So we'll move on to Item Number Five, which is a continued discussion of our agreement and differences in reaching our final recommendations. And I think in your packets, you have Gary Fuge's summary of the survey results, the internal survey and draft survey that we did to help us with our discussion and deliberations. So you can pull that out. And I know there were a couple of versions of this, so am I... Are we looking at the version that was updated as of...
The survey, the spreadsheet is updated, correct?
That includes John's.
But the summary does not.
The summary does not yet. Okay, right, because that came in quite... Thanks for updating the survey response sheet. Sure, so it's pretty, it's all pretty up to date. Okay. So I thought we would, and I hope that everyone's had an opportunity to look at that summary. But thank you, thanks again, Gary, for preparing that and, you know, digesting all of the results and putting it together. That's great. So I think we could kind of pick up maybe where we left off and start. What I thought we might do tonight is to use the information we got last Monday to advance our, you know, march towards the final recommendations, to just drill down a little in each of the categories that you've identified. So because in writing this, the clearer we can be now, the easier the writing will be and the easier the editing will be because we, it's clear how the group feels. Or doesn't, like something doesn't like it, division, no division. Paul, go ahead.
Just a thought.
Yes, go ahead.
This has been a wonderful exercise, so thank you for coordinating all that. So I thought maybe the next step might squeeze it down a little bit into two columns. One majority, one minority, X's and O's on there. So you don't have to say Greg said one thing, I said another, you know, and try to memorialize that in a report. This way you can say that majority of folks felt this way, that there was a minority. I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think in writing it, because I've been thinking about how that would look in writing it, I mean, that's the approach to be taken. I think where someone has made a certain point that is critical either to majority or minority or someone has illuminated something, I did this in the, we did this in the main, in our status report as well, that's highlighted. So for example, Paul, you had made some points about, you know, preferences of the communities in your interviews, and so that's in there, you know, that kind of thing. So, yeah, so we're pretty much keeping it with, keeping it neutral in terms of, I'm not going to mention everyone's vote on everything and get into the weeds. That's, we just have to kind of, where we agree, fabulous, and where we don't, majority, minority discussion will do, I think. Yeah, sounds good. Okay, so looking at, and then, has everyone had a chance to see John Salino's responses and actually read his memo that came today?
I didn't print the updated Excel, but, because I couldn't get it out there, we have it on there, but I just marked off his, what I thought he said. I don't think he did like we did.
No, but I extrapolated what he was writing, and it should be updated on that sheet.
On this one.
On this one, that Brooke has, right, that Brooke has provided. Okay.
For some reason I couldn't print this, I don't know why, but I printed it fine after you sent me that.
That's good. Okay. Yeah, and John Salino didn't, you know, sort of check the boxes, as it were, but he, he looks like he went through the categories and, you know, pretty much gave his opinion on the different issues. So that's, that's helpful. Okay, so I think we'll just begin with the first, we'll go, is that okay? We go back to the first of the topics, which is the preferred course of action. So if you, if you, you know, I guess if we throw in John's, let's see how you describe that. You, you kind of put it at, "Approve the STRs by ordinance and zoning regulations" would have been his selection. And I guess, yeah. John's, the key, so the key, if I can just read this, in brief summary, STRs, this is from John. "SDRs are of less than seven days, belong in commercial, business, industrial zones, and do not belong in residential zones. In brief, because they're effectively commercial activities. STRs of seven days and longer have been and are accepted as LTRs." So he has kind of a, he has a very interesting take because I don't think anyone else quite, you know, mirrors his, his view, right, with the seven day. The seven day definition seems to drive everything for him.
But he does make an interesting distinction, which Ann raised at the last meeting, which we might, we might decide on different recommendations for regulations if a rental unit is in a commercial district as opposed to residential. Ann had mentioned that, and it kind of stuck in my head. But John kind of built his fortress around that.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's key to his, yeah, key to his, his approach, we'll say. Yeah, for sure, there's definitely, depending on how you begin and begin to unravel, you know, then everything will flow from that. Okay, so I just wanted to point out his, his approach. So I kind of looked at his, I don't know if it's just me, but I sort of looked at his as sort of in its own category, like I couldn't really pinpoint it, and I still see that we're kind of in this almost equal division of, you know, of, let's say, the two possibilities of somehow partially banning them and then otherwise approving them and then regulating them. We're kind of in those two worlds.
And I should say, when I was putting this together, it struck me that those two things are not mutually exclusive, that you could endorse a partial ban and you could do it through an ordinance and so on.
I agree, and that's why probably I'd do number four and take out number three. I had three and four, but I thought four could incorporate part of number three.
Oh, okay.
So I'm taking off three and leaving four.
So, okay, so that, I mean, so that's the nuance that's, that we need to capture in a way, you know? And similarly, today, when I got the email, I got an email from Gary Cachello that he wasn't coming here, he reiterated his point, "I voted for an outright ban on STRs or a ban allowing grandfathering." So he's kind of in a little bit betwixt and between there, too.
I thought that he, I thought that he started with a total ban.
Right, and then was gravitating there. But then sometimes in his answers, he would go back to if, if we're banning them, then we don't need, you know, we don't need a permitting kind of thing, so.
I may, I may be pointing out the obvious, but...
No, please do.
I don't know how we can do either three or four without a registration system or a permitting system, because we just don't know who's renting, who was renting, who has been, who wants to rent, who will be renting.
I, I agree with you, and I also was thinking, how would we do a partial ban that grandfathers in the face of no information?
Right, yeah, right. I, I agree with you, and I think that's a good point to make. It's hard to, that's where I had a little bit of difficulty with John's point about like no, no reg, you know, no permitting and so forth, because, yeah, inevitably, you need something to, to deal with the fact that at a minimum, you've got existing, pre-existing use there, and so you have to keep tabs on that. Whether you go down the pike of, okay, you're going to be grandfathered, and maybe in two years you have to permit yourself. I don't know what we would do, but I'm just saying initially, you still need information. So, okay, but I, would it be fair to say about, so it would be fair to say that at least from that, you know, that thirty thousand foot view, we generally are on either side of, you know, allowing them and regulating them versus, okay, let's do a partial ban. I mean, we're kind of in that, I think there is that, that kind of, that difference, right? I mean, does that articulate sufficiently the difference? I know it would look different in writing, but I'm just trying to hone in on that.
Yeah, those are two very, very, very different approaches.
They will overlap when you start dealing with permitting or regulation of any kind or a registration program, you know? They could still overlap.
Again, I think we have to remember, we're just presenting this to the board of thought.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, right.
So if we presented it in the form of a minority, majority, and a conversation on each point. Yeah, the majority says that they want to approve using ordinances and zoning. But there was some discussion about, do we want to limit the number? Does that mean a percentage of units in the community at a maximum or a ban or grandfather or whatever? And then, you know, they're going to have to figure this out. And they're probably going to take a different approach than, than we were, because it's a different set of people.
And I feel like it's, it's the ever-evolving topic. I mean, we're trying to capture it and eliminate all the noise and get to the heart of it all, and that's great. But it is seemingly endless evolution of the topic in the state because more and more towns are taking up the topic, they're having committees, they're discussing, figuring out what to do. And I didn't, this, I didn't absorb this at first when I heard it, but when the planning person over in, not glad you heard it, was Preston, spoke to her, to their planning commission the night I went to that meeting, and she actually said, "We may not get this right again, but we have another, you know, but it's okay because this is ever, ever-changing." So, and I thought, that's, that's, but then now I can more and more appreciate that point, you know, that you may get it, you know, about eighty-five percent correct, and then somewhere along the way, you're going to have to alter.
Legislation is a moment in time.
That's right.
It's a moment in time.
So you do the best you can.
It's like a will, you know, you establish it, and then who knows what's going to happen tomorrow or six months from now.
Good point.
Everything changes. You could die. You could die, and that would finalize it.
Okay, so in the preferred course of action, we basically said we're going to agree to disagree on three and four. And that would be the majority of our recommendation at this point.
I mean...
Yeah, go ahead.
When I looked at these write-ups, I was like reckoning the margin. Am I okay with these? No matter how I voted, you know, with this one. So for that preferred course of action, I'm okay with either three or four. I mean, not a hell I'm going to die on type of thing.
Right.
Either one is okay for me. Even though I was the number three, number four is for me.
To me, they're two almost diametrically opposed worldviews. Partial ban is, we want to put a stop to this, and we're going to, I don't know how we oversee that happening. And the other one is, yes, everybody's welcome. We, we're looking to strike a good balance here with renters and homeowners.
Yeah, I see them as, as two different things. They will overlap, as we've discussed, but they are two different worldviews of STRs, you know? One is, one is, at least on the face of what you've written, one is the approving of them and then regulating them. I mean, it all depends on how severe the regulations are, you know?
I think it also has to do with how do we see where we are today in terms of, is it legal in East Line or is it not? Even that has been, you know...
It's in question.
In a permissive set of regulations, they're not mentioned, so they're not allowed yet. The sign ordinances has made them allowed. So I think, to your point, you know, I mean, if we identify the fact that, yes, it's approved, we're taking a step in one direction. But with an ordinance, we're approving X number or a ban on, I don't know what the ban is. A ban on beyond a certain number could be a ban.
It was more, I think it...
A ban altogether, then you're right, then it's, you're clashing heads.
Well, you're, whatever the number is currently that exists, that's where it's frozen in time. And it's, it can only go down from there, right?
And using the thirty-day definition, I think that's what we're doing.
Unless you ban at a, at a potential growth point, like I said, five percent. It's two percent or three percent now.
Okay, but that's, that's a different thing. What this says, at least the way I thought it, Matt, was there are X number of short-term rentals currently in the town. And people who have those will be allowed to continue them, but when they die or move or sell or whatever, that one goes away, it comes off the table.
But that's this one line. Like, I think when we're talking about bans and caps, we've got to kind of take the other three lines that are further in the survey and blend them together and say, you know, people want to approve it, majority want to approve it on the board, but there's some limiting conversation in what that is.
Because you, you do have as a second, to Paul's point, you do have as a second option, total ban, eliminate them from East Line.
Right.
Right, when no one wanted that. So we're clear on that, and we, and, and no one seems to want to stay the course, even though Gary Cachello has sometimes mentioned that. But again, I think he's moving in the direction of the number three.
The partial ban.
Yes, you know? I mean, for me, the way I've, I've seen it, I kind of like the partial ban, the way you've written it, but I am not adverse to, to Ann's ideas about approving them in certain areas, you know, where, let's say they're in commercial zones or mixed use, yes. So...
I think we get a lot of pushback for that commercial zone idea. I think that every beach association is not a commercial zone, and that's where the historic use of these properties has come from.
But that was also, I also thought the beach communities that have their own zoning should keep it.
Yeah, that's...
Well, I don't think you can pass an ordinance that take away the zoning.
Yeah, no, I think the current, the current beach areas that have their own zoning, it should stay that way.
Amen, I'm actually thrilled that they have that ability to self-govern on the topic of short-term rentals. I, I've made that point a number of times. I think it's really good, and we have to...
But an ordinance would supersede that zoning, so.
That's why I think some things like parking and noise could be ordinance, but other things could be through zoning.
No, really, it's, it was just the opposite. I thought parking and noise would be a zoning reg, and the permitting and general layout of what it is would be an ordinance. Because that would preserve for the beach towns that have their own zoning and would still give them the freedom to go that way.
That's on my, my to-do list under this, this topic.
You know, I wondered too, after listening to Pine Grove a couple of times, the gentleman that spoke did actually speak at one of the first meetings. If they're an association, you know, I don't know why their rules couldn't prohibit anything they wanted to prohibit and permit anything they wanted to permit within the association.
So that, Paul, is the, is the topic that I did ask for that legal advice on because we know there's clarity with respect to the three communities such as yours being one that have their own zoning. But the lack of clarity on that issue, where you exactly put your finger on, is what I've been trying to get the answer on. And we got a kind of half-answer some months back, but it needs research because it can, there's many ways that you can be prohibiting them in these associations. You could, it could be by deed even, it could, you know, deed, or it could be that your bylaws have some sort of force because you're, you're a community, you know, you're a community that basically under state statute has authority to enact ordinances and have bylaws, such as these beach communities. So, so that's something that is outstanding. I don't think we have the time to wait for, let's say, new legal, you know, legal help and staff and get that whole issue straightened out and ask that question again. But that's, and that's critical to how you, in some ways, how you structure your, your recommendations, you know? If you, if, if you are of the mindset that trying to allow self-governance within each of these communities is, is something that's a goal. If it's not, and you want uniformity everywhere, right? You just want one size fits all throughout this town, then you could definitely, you know, go in the other direction. But for, for me, and I've made that clear, I, you know, certainly with this zoning, please, let's try to allow that, the, the, the communities that have it to govern in that way and self-govern. And for these other communities, yeah, it's always been a question for me. And so that's why I've kind of gone in that direction of the partial ban because I just, I just feel like, you know, let's try to preserve as much zoning authority and preference that we can. So that, that's where that comes from, but good point about that. I actually have the how you're going to do this in, in this section on preferred course of action. So, yeah, how, and what is your preference and why? We just, we were kind of touching on the topic of zoning versus ordinance again, which we started way back a long time ago discussing. So that, that just needs legal clarity for us.
I think when, even when we started, the idea of an ordinance was around the permit system, was around registration. It was not around who gets to have short-term rentals and who doesn't.
Correct.
That could certainly be handled in the zoning.
Yeah, like the guts of the, yeah, the guts and the worldview and all that's got to kind of stay with zoning. Because it is a land use issue, and again, you can protect those communities that have their own, at a minimum.
Zoning can be as simple as just putting it in definitions and defining it. And allowing it by permit or special permit, if you want. I mean, I don't agree with that, but that...
Yeah, exactly. It doesn't have to be allowed.
Or it's allowed in all zones. And then the rest of the stuff is just, most of what we heard is people want to know who to get a hold of.
Exactly.
That's right, that's right.
You know, they want to know that it's safe, and, you know, they want to make sure people are treating it right, taking care of business, which is trash, which is parking, which is noise, which is, you know, not messing up the beach or the main street or whatever it is, you know, so.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, I guess it, you know, this, this first question just keep, it just goes back to the, you know, the, the basic questions that we asked that Gary and I had everyone, you know, answer. It goes back to that same issue of just, you know, do you want to, do you, do you prefer to have the, these entities, the STRs? And if so, I mean, do you want to limit them? And if you don't want to limit them, then it's kind of free range, you know? But if you want to limit them, then you have to start thinking about partial bans or caps or regulations.
But I think for our charge, we just say to them, this is the conversation we have. We think zoning is a place for it, and town ordinance, there's a place for it. But there was some conversation about, do we want to limit, you know? The majority approved, or equal people approved, equal people wanted a ban of some sort? And I think we just push it forward to them with that.
And...
Because they're going to have to write the ordinance. The zoning is going to have to write the regulation change, the definition or text amendment.
The ordinance may be something as streamlined as wherever short-term rentals are legal in town, they should look like this, you know, that kind of thing. In other words, kind of a reference back to, to the zoning regulations. If you've got communities with their own zoning and you potentially have these other communities that have other ways to regulate, you know, then you may just have to have a very... And I've seen that in some of the examples that we have gone through where the, the ordinance is very de minimis. It all goes back to zoning, you know? Okay, so...
Or it doesn't. If you're a hair salon and you need to get a health inspection, that's not said in zoning. That's a, I believe that's an ordinance, right?
Yes.
It, it doesn't actually say zoning, it just says, look, zoning says it's okay. These are the things we think you need to do to keep it okay.
Right, exactly.
I mean, to me, the ordinance items should be the things that are, that are the one size fit all, like parking, noise, registration, or, you know, those are the, that should be the ordinance. The rest should be zoning.
Okay, okay, that's, that's a good point. I, I like that. I'm actually going to, I will capture that in the writing. Yeah, I think that's good. It makes sense. But, you know, then again, it's going to be up to, or the selectmen, ordinance is within their purview, and town attorney will write and review that, you know, or, so it's, we can suggest, but we don't know what that's ultimately going to look like, but your suggestion is, is a good one. So, okay. Yeah, so that, I feel like for the first one, there's enough to write about. Ahead of the first one, I was thinking if we, if the writing starts with, I was trying to think of how this is going to look. If the writing starts with a quick review of WIBBIE and how WIBBIE, the, the decision in WIBBIE, how it's requiring us to act, I mean, that's a theory I have. I don't feel like we can do nothing, I think, in view of that decision and our, our zoning regulations out there with just the silence of, you know, not, we don't, we don't talk about short-term rentals, we don't talk about long-term, but we don't talk about short-term rentals. So in view of the WIBBIE decision, I really do think it's time that that be addressed. Plus, as Greg has pointed out a couple of times, we have this sort of under-the-radar thing happening with short-term rentals, and so it's time to just, you know, deal with them. So I think that's, does anyone else have another viewpoint about WIBBIE and how? I just want, I have to sort of bridge that gap between the status report and this final recommendation, set of recommendations. And I thought a good beginning place would be, well, we waited for WIBBIE, we heard WIBBIE, we analyzed it, we heard everyone's thoughts about it. And it's, you know, certainly solidifying our thoughts. And it's, you know, certainly um solidifying our thoughts. Reinforcing thoughts that we have.
I think what it did was really weaken the status quo that we, that the town has right now.
Okay, that's a great thing, yeah.
It was a rather narrow decision.
Right, right.
But one thing it really did was took the legs out from under our current position.
Yeah, between signage for rentals, plus I'm telling you that, uh you know what, you just can't infer these things or not infer them, so you have to, you have to state what you want in your zoning regulations. And that was the message I got when I listened to Attorney Pelosi, who was the attorney for um WIBI, was um just go and zone and be specific. That was, even before that decision came out.
See, I I think WIBI is secondary to our situation by not having long term rentals mentioned in the regulations. I think that's the primary issue that is going to be followed.
You mean short term rentals?
No, no, long term rentals, because they're not mentioned in the zoning regulations, which puts them in the same position as short term rentals. But yet they've been an accepted, they've been an accepted activity, probably for longer than short term rentals have. And they they, you know, they're immune to, at this point, unless you watch those TV shows about apartment dot com and, you know, TV commercials right home, what is it? You know, they haven't really hit the app scene yet, where the short term rentals have taken advantage of the app scene. So I think zoning has to recognize long term rentals and academic rentals in a, in in the regulations, at least in their definitions. And they, therefore, they have to recognize short term rentals. WIBI says that you're allowed to have it, but on the other hand, you can be regulated.
Yeah.
And for, to your point about we have to act, no Inc. had to act because
Yes.
you could reach out and touch your neighbor, Pine Grove is in that situation. Um, the the other one that had to act was Preston, because they have two casinos there. They're probably getting a whole different clientele than we're getting. I think we get some people who may visit the casino in Eastland, but I don't think we're getting casino goers that, you know, they came here for four days at casino. And I think there's probably a different mix in Preston that caused them to act. And they're a quieter community, they're a much smaller community than Eastland is. So, so I think we need to address that, that other issue and let WIBI take care of itself.
Yeah, um, I think the lo- the long, the short term versus long term is an important distinction cause one, our charge was just the short term rentals and the, but in our, we've discovered that we we see this overlap at times with long term rentals. So I thought we'd spend a minute actually on this topic of short versus long term. Um and what you think the, if there are differences, what do you think they are? Cause that would, that that affects how they're regulated, you know, if you think that they're all the same and they cover the same topic, then it's, you know, just, as we, as that topic, the topic of short term versus long term will be mentioned in the in the paper. But do you have any thoughts about short term versus long term rentals? I mean, if they're different, how are they different? If they're the same, how are they totally the same?
I think the woman from Giant's Net Heights kind of summed it up. I mean, if somebody rents it for a year, they become part of the neighborhood and the community. Where she said the house across the street, it's every two or three days, it's more like a motel six.
Turnover.
Yeah, the the people staying there don't become part of the neighborhood, the community. I think that's the main difference.
See, I've always taken issue with that, based on my experience, because I have people that, families that come back to see families. Families that come back for ceremonies, graduations or weddings. They have been, in a lot of cases, part of the community, and so they feel like they still are, that's my hometown. Uh or they're coming back here um to partake in something that people they left behind, friends, relatives, siblings, you know, are are participating in, and that's as much about being in a community as some of the renters that that I have in a long term. They, they don't know their neighbors, they don't, you know, they don't go along with that. So I think, I think we have to give at least short term rentals the opportunity to 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 recognize that there is that community tie. You know, and I would say more than fifty percent of the the tenants that I have or that we have are here for a reason. Some are here for the beach, some are here for the town, some are here for.
Your STRs or the?
STRs, long term, you know, people are looking for places to live long term.
Yeah.
You know, they can't afford the bargains, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's, it, that's similar in in our neighborhood in Oswego, Chi Hills. It's um, it does, there's short term renters, there's long term renters. Neither group is as involved in the community as.
As your permanent residents, right, as the homeowners.
So it, I've just had trouble trying to come up with reasons why we should separate these.
And why we should treat them differently.
Yeah, that to be.
Separate.
Short term rental from short term.
I I don't think you can, WIBI didn't. And and but my point is the zoning regulations are all screwed up by not mentioning, mentioning them.
Like thing, I asked why, the history of it, and I was told that, you know, for years, long term rentals have never been a problem or an issue. It's just when the Airbnb and Verbo and these more people buying them just as a business, they become an issue, so it's all kind of brought it all up to the surface.
But I don't think a problem is the issue, I I think the regulations, if they're permissive and they don't state a use. And here we are arguing with the opposite side of that use, and WIBI both addressed. You know, you have, you have to fix it, whether it's a definition or not, or you have to say, you know, we're gonna take our chances on what happens legally, and we're not gonna mention short term rental, we're just gonna leave it alone, we're not gonna leave long term rentals. And you'll get a slew of people that'll sue um as a result of that. Which I think by a mere definition or mere recognition in the zoning, which is easy to do. I have the list of all the numbered sections that we can add that to.
I agree, which should be clarified, now that all this has come up, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, these two examples aside of what you've seen in Oswego Chi Hills and what um you've seen in your own uh short term rental, Paul. Um you you do hear more, I I've heard more of what you are describing, which is the, the, just the, whether uh long term rentals have gotten the bad rap, I don't know. But that is what you hear, that, um, I mean, it's it's kind of intuitive that if you're there, the lo- you know, longer. And, I mean, I know, I I've mentioned too that I have a, I have a long term rental neck, next to my home, but it's, it's had kids in it, kids that have went to school or whatever. Um, I grew up in a city where um I was close to a college community and there was um, there were academic rentals, but those children went to school with us, you know? So that's different from hosting someone who is um here for their, you know, three day weekend or something like that. So, yeah, I mean, I I think, but we'll leave that to zoning, and I think it's good that we're pointing it out that we've seen a lot of overlap, so it's time to try to to last soothe the topic a little bit and decide how you wanna, how how they wanna treat them and define them.
But we weren't asked to look into long term.
Correct.
So we didn't ask people to come in and tell us your problems living next to a long term rental.
That's an important point because.
So I think we can mention it, just to say, like you said, the overlap, but but we're not gonna speak in our report about
No.
whether we should or shouldn't do anything, we will be mum on that, right?
I, that's a good point, I mean, we can, I I, you know, we can.
We're having a hard enough time figuring out short term.
I know, and, no, definitely, and you are absolutely right, and this is a point that also, um, uh.
Either way, I don't think we can legislate people's behavior, whether they're for a long term or whether they're a short term.
It's just so hard to say.
Kind of outside.
Can have good renters or not, exactly, um.
So I think the key is.
I have more trouble with long term than I do short term.
And and that's what we heard at the first meeting we had.
Heard that a couple of times.
Just because of the rules in Connecticut about getting rid of bad renters, it's hard to do. If you have short term, you're only there for a short period of time and you don't have to rent to them next time, right? So, but, yeah.
Um, but you're.
Digress.
You know, no, that's actually a very good point about, um, because um, uh Gary Cuccello has made your point a number of times um uh about that we haven't taken evidence on, you know, really, you know, a whole lot, and we haven't put it out there, come and tell us about your long term rentals. So, you know, we, our our charge was more narrow. Um, but we, I think definitely um put the red flag off that, you know, you may wanna, look at this and you may wanna treat them to some extent the same, but uh we did not, you know, um ask for that information. Um, okay, um, uh, let's see, okay, so. Um, alrighty, um, let's go on to number two, cause I think there's enough, uh, we have enough sense of the two general approaches that will, that are possible for us.
Are we deciding what we're saying section by section, or are we just kind of talking about section by section?
We're talking about, like, where is that agreement or disagreement, uh, to be.
But I mean, are you gonna say now, after we move to the next one, that this is the agreement, this is the disagreement on section one?
Yeah, I mean, pretty much, although I I still say that maybe, uh, well, I I did note that um Gary Cuccello is still kind of between those, but he is to a partial ban. But John Salino, I guess, I guess falls into that category, although, yeah, it's, how shall I say this? It's it's a little imperfect because of the nature of just asking questions and and, you know, you, but I do think we're kind of um, we're heading more in the direction of approving them. But but you have a, you have a, that, if you wanna say that's your majority opinion, but you have a substantial minority, the rest of everyone um thinking the other way, Dan, go ahead.
I mean, it's like you say for that first one, I mean, I'm prob- you know, I'm, I'm between that partial ban and the approved STRs. But where I really wanna be is approve STRs by ordinance and zoning regs with a cap, right? So it's kind of hard to, there's, there's no line for that in the first one, right?
Those two things though are not mutually exclusive. It it's, it's unfortunate wording on my.
But if I say approve STRs by ordinance and zoning regs, I feel like I'm saying that's hundred percent, right?
Right.
So what I'm saying is I'm in agreement with number four, if we put some kind of limit on it.
Yeah, that that's on me, I think, I I didn't.
But you can't get everything in one section.
No, it's hard, it is so difficult to ask the perfect question and have all these questions interrelate perfectly.
I think he's right, that's, that's exactly what we say to the board of select.
Right.
Exactly what he said, most people wanna approve it, but, you know, there's a caveat in there, there's something they wanna make sure that we're, we're doing the right thing, you know?
The last line in the next section captures that very nicely, let's say, you know, we should say to them, we recommend number four in the first one with the caveat that uh there'll be no caps, but that there's a sunset review after three to five years.
To me, that number four says how you do it, it's not what you're doing, it's how you're doing it.
Exactly.
Um, wait, a number.
What did you say, Anne, I'm sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
To me, number four isn't what you're doing, it's how you're doing it.
Yes.
And below, it's like going down, it's more what you're doing, but that's just the vehicle.
Right, that's the best, that's my how.
My hope, my hope was that the first one was broad and then it got more and more specific.
I can look at that, yeah, I can read, I can work.
Yeah, so I I think you're correct about that, that's a very good point. Um, so we're, it's the, it's the what, what are we doing for the first three? And then the last three are how we're doing it.
Yeah, it really, when I was reviewing this, I thought that that third item, partial ban, grandfather, should probably have been in number two, because that's where you're talking about limiting the number.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, every other point on the, on the top one was broad. You know, what's the approach we're going to take?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Putting partial ban in there was a very specific thing.
Yeah. And, you know, in the writing of this, it's, the survey, I mean, it's not as though the survey is gonna provide the verbiage per se for our conclusions and our recommendations. This is just getting us to conversation.
Yeah, and we can summarize the survey, we could take the two sections, one and two, and make them one sentence.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to make a sentence on each one.
No, correct, correct.
What you talked about.
Yeah, no, correct, that's, that was the idea, um, cause you had asked me, when you, when you reviewed last week's meeting, what, you know, other than putting the Xs in, what else, and we were talking about doing that summary,
Right.
which gives the flavor of the meeting, the flavor of, um, you know, of uh the the agreement and differences. But um.
Thank you, Gary and Anne, for making me smarter on what this is trying to do. So, as I read it now, is I would say approve STRs by ordinance and zoning regs. And then the next questions are, what are those ordinance and zoning regs?
Right.
That's, um.
Okay, so that's what I, that's not the way I read it the first time, so I I appreciate you guys helping me with that.
Okay, okay.
So that would change my vote for that first section, I would go, instead of the partial ban grandfather existing, I'd go with approve STRs, but then I would be setting caps.
You would, and doing some other things, okay.
Number four?
He's going, he's revoking his partial ban, he's talking about ordinance.
Yeah, I.
He's moving three to four.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I'm gonna cross that out and move it over here.
That puts a, that puts a um clear majority.
Yes. But I also have, so I also have, yeah, cause I have, um, this is where I'm open to this. Um, approve them through zoning, you know, okay. And, you know, I'm not adverse to an ordinance either, but I really wanna make sure that we do this primarily and through zoning for the many reasons I've stated in the past, so that's why my my X goes there. I don't wanna forget zoning. Okay, all right, so I think that's the, that's where we're at. Um, and Anne, so are you over here still, you're still with this?
I'm at number, no, I'm.
You're here now, so you're not here.
To me, those two things were like apples and oranges.
They were.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I think you could do that through that.
Yes, yeah.
What did she do?
So that, so that's an interesting point, so Anne, Anne explained that, you're saying, uh, you can, you can do the partial ban through.
If that's what they agreed on, through ordinance and some.
Or through the zoning as I had suggested, right? Yeah, okay.
So you've got a solid majority now for ordinance and zone?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, um, okay.
Can we go to two?
Yes, yes, I know, yes, okay, I'm about to go to two, back to two. Okay, so limits, we we talked about caps. Um, so you know that caps are, act to limit the growth of short term rentals, right? This is the idea of them, so it's one tr- one tool, as Dan was speaking about, to control them. Um, if regulations desired, okay, um, so, um.
So it looks like from my notes here, one, two, three, four, five people are in favor of some kind of limit or cap.
Correct.
And three, no caps.
Uh, correct.
Just depends on how you wanna do that cap townwide versus neighborhood, okay?
And John had no, had no commentary about caps, did he?
He did not.
Right, so that's like a no vote there, okay. Um, okay. Any?
So we could certainly say very simply that there was a conversation about caps, we were evenly split, more or less. Some wanted to set caps, here are some of the theories, neighborhoods or percent of.
Or pres- or townwide.
And then the others said, no caps, but let's look at it in a few years and, you know, see what happens, and maybe we can implement a cap. You know, and that.
Yeah, there are, I mean, yeah, there's benefits to not having the caps initially because, uh, I think Gary, you have mentioned this, uh, um, you know, we can gather more information uh if we start, you know, a system of monitoring, we can get more information about the short term rentals we have. I think you had, you had said that it's difficult, um, and you can talk more about this yourself, but it's difficult to, you know, set a cap and we don't have all that data right away.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we don't have a precise number, we've got a range between a hundred and twenty, and I think the top end was a hundred and eighty or something.
Well, my worry about that is three or five years from now, it could be too late, right?
Yeah.
Now you've got thirty-three percent of the communities
Yes.
are short term rentals, and now if you go to a grandfather thing, it's not gonna help, right? It's a, it's a harder rock to push at that point.
I think too, um.
And and three and to four, five years, that was just kind of an arbitrary thing to put a timeline in there.
I might say the same thing at two years, you know, it doesn't matter, I just, I just think that it's harder to get the horse back in the barn. it's harder to get the horse back in the barn than-
Mm-hmm, I agree with that and that's something we've, we've discussed. I think maybe, how about this? I mean, we've given them a set of data that we collected. It's now last year's data in essence, right? So it's time, if, you know, if there's gonna be a cap, that they would need to update that information and they can do that manually. I mean, you know, our zoning officer here in town knows how they do it in, in Noank and how they keep tabs on things. Or you can hire out, you know, Agranicus or Agranicus-like company and get up-to-date data. And if you're gonna, if you're gonna do a cap, that might be the recommendation that comes with it.
All the agencies have to provide information in the town's annual report. And if this is something everybody's looking at, this is under the magnifying glass. Certainly people in the health department and the fire department and the zoning department, as part of their annual report, could indicate there's a growing problem, there's no problem, there's, you know, this is what we looked at, this is what we think we should do in each annual report. And after five years, you look back at those reports and you kinda get a flavor of what's happened.
Or you could take the approach that Paul suggested earlier, which is to say, yeah, we wanna set a cap but we're gonna set it at, say, ten percent. And then have somebody watching as, as the short-term rentals start to get closer to that cap, then we can actively say, whoa, we need to put a stop to this or something else. And that cap is sufficiently high that it's well above where we are right now.
Although it's working fine. It could be twelve. I don't know what people are gonna say.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would add that in, in Oak Grove Beach, and I don't know about, you know, Crescent Beach or the other places, we're pretty close to ten percent already.
Okay, okay.
If, if you did it by neighborhood, but if you did it by town, you could have ninety percent of your own rental and you still wouldn't hit it.
Right, right.
Exactly. How many houses in your, eighty, eighty.
So it, it looks like we-
We're way about ten percent right now.
Looks like we have this at least potential for, well, it looks like setting caps. We do have the no ca- I mean, it seems like a little dilemma here of no caps to start but to, I think you've put your finger on this, Gary, that, that we need some data. Oh, the, the town through, you know, whether it's, it's, you know, Board of Selectmen, whoever's doing the ordinance or whatever, with respect to a cap or zoning, we would need, we would need additional data to, to, to make that number somehow for how you do it, if, if it's by neighborhood because of Greg's point about the ten percent being reached already there perhaps. So what do you think?
The town, I don't like the townwide cap because to me, most of them are going to be at the shore. So if you say five percent of the town, they could all end up in the shoreline neighborhoods and that could really change the shoreline neighborhoods. I see most of them being along there.
Okay.
So if you did it by neighborhood, you could at least kind of save some of the neighborhoods from being all short-term rentals.
But, but doing it by neighbor, and I like doing it by neighborhood, but I imagine the administrative quagmire, if you have two dozen different neighborhoods and X number of houses per neighborhood.
Yeah, that gets, or maybe not, maybe not neighborhood like, you know, Crescent Beach, the, you know, the-
Or, or, I was talking with Anne over the weekend, maybe we do it by voting districts. That expands the-
Yeah, there's different ways.
You look at Giant's Neck Heights, which is a large number of homes. I'm sure that that probably is beyond ten percent. Now, I think more than, more than that uses this as an opportunity to offset costs and-
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's combo, short-term and long-term or just short?
I think there's a lot of long-term. I think there's a lot of, but I also think there's more than ten percent if I had to guess, short-term. I don't know that number. I, I haven't looked at it. It just seems to me that, from the conversations I have with the association.
And then we have the added issue of, and Mr. Zamarka, Attorney Zamarka, I brought this up a number of times, that these cases, there, there've been many cases brought, you know, challenging caps. That was a, something he didn't recommend, remember that? So we have that looming. But again, we're not, you know, I think we all were, were of the mindset, we have to, if we're going to act, we can't always worry about every lawsuit that might be pending. Obviously, we wanna avoid the big pitfalls. Because there were cases for and against caps. They, they fall on, on both sides, right? So I think you had done some research on that and-
Anne, I have to go get my phone.
Yeah, go ahead.
And the reason is it controls my hearing.
Oh, okay.
And I'm having a lot of trouble beyond you hearing what's going on.
Or go ahead, go ahead.
Let me run out.
Well, we'll take a minute. Okay, we'll just take a moment.
I'm gonna take a bio break while he's getting his phone.
Okay, sounds good. We'll take a break for just a moment, okay?
I hope our audio doesn't leave.
No, I'm gonna mute our mics for just a moment while we're, you know, candy anyone?
I'm sure there's thousands watching on TV.
This one is, um, yeah, it's, we record and then they can watch it tomorrow. It's not live, I know. It's not, which is good because I'd be futzing with everything too, nice, when I was on, when I was on Board of Selectmen.
They didn't record the brilliant things I said. Somehow it wasn't working at that time.
Yeah.
I just assumed that nobody watched this. But I walk my dogs four times a day and it's, hey, it's only me.
I know, no, you'd be very surprised. Yeah, you'd be very surprised. Brooke, I'm glad Devin showed up.
Yes, yes.
Good.
He was very relieved.
Oh, God, yeah. Yeah, I was taking a good look at that credit card myself.
You lose a whole bunch of cards like that. You lost a afternoon.
Oh, God, what a, what a nightmare, yeah.
Well, it's nice they let you lock it for as long as you want and it gives you time to look for it without canceling it.
Yes, definitely, definitely.
Yeah, don't worry about those as much as the IDs and stuff like that and other stuff.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're all creatures of habit. You tend to, you know, you, you keep the ca, your main card in the same spot, in your wallet, whatever. But there are times when you know you've been in a rush leaving a store and you've stuck it in the back pocket or, you know, whatever. And that's when you, then you go out to make your next purchase and it's, oh no, where is it?
I couldn't find it anywhere. And I, I opened my refrigerator and it was stuck to the homeless stuff.
That's a novel place to miss.
Okay, I haven't done that yet. I haven't done that yet.
I used to say to stop using your credit cards, put it in the freezer in water. But I hadn't heard about sticking it in your homeless.
Well, like at Stop &amp; Shop and I got at the Stop &amp; Shop card, I think it flipped out then and just landed on it.
Yeah. That's crazy.
There were three of us, STR committee members at the Stop &amp; Shop.
At the same time?
At the same time. Did you have a legal meeting?
I made sure I just nodded to them. I didn't want to get accused of that.
Zip your mouth, yeah.
Couldn't have a long conversation with Greg and Anne at the same time.
Have you been asked whether this year, have you, have you filled out the form?
Mm-hmm.
No, I haven't done that yet. I haven't gone yet this year.
I'm sure I gave it to him but I filled it out.
Oh, okay.
I could've paused the video but I didn't bother minimizing my- No, I did, I muted us. All right, I'm going to unmute the mics.
Thank you very much. I apologize.
Oh, no worries. We, that's great.
Are you among the hearing again?
Is it better?
Yeah, but it will be.
Okay, that's good. So on this cap thing, it, it looks like we recognize it as a tool. Let's say, what can we say? We recognize it as a tool to limit and we're very interested in it, maybe more than Mr. Zamarka would've wanted us to be, right? Okay.
I don't remember Attorney Zamarka ever saying there was something we could do. It's always cautioning us, there's a lot of things you can't do.
Can't do, I know, I know.
He's retiring.
He's retiring.
Right, so not, right, it's fine.
Another thing that I noticed, and again, it was out of sequence here, but there was one town and I can't remember, I think it was Lime, where they only allow one individual or family or commercial entity to have one rental unit.
Oh, so that's, I mean, that was like Preston did that too. That, there were, that's in a few, a few of these.
But as I was reviewing this, I thought, you know, that's another way to cap.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yes, yes. So, exactly. So you have to, I mean, I think we're of the opinion that there has to be some limitations. It's not a free-for-all. Even if we wanna allow them, we're, we're all saying, you know, be careful there, do something. One being a cap, another could be this, et cetera. So, yes, tho, those are, you know, so we, you know, we could potentially have caps. It's gonna be, I think it's, I, I'm gonna, not to dump this on the, the Board or Commission that has to deal with it, but I do think they're gonna need data. I agree with your point in figuring out. And, and also, yeah, wha, I mean, if you do this, this by neighborhood thing, this could be an administrative nightmare, you know? But if they're willing to do it and they have the resources and don't need to hire out more, then maybe that's that. That's where I think you, you might start getting into trouble legally where, you know, if you, you set it as a townwide limit, there's less complaining that can go on about that. You start with neighborhood by neighborhood, then it becomes a little discriminatory or could potentially be just a thought there. But, um, but I, I think we've identified a control, you know, a way to control. And, and I think the group's pretty much in, in agreement with it and it's just a matter of how that would look. That it would be, we would suggest that you try that or think about it.
Well, you could even say no caps would fall into that category too, but we're looking for some time to gather information.
And, yeah, with the caveat about the information. Because I think, yeah, if you feel like you can't do it until you have a year's worth of information, then let it go for a while. Okay, minimum nights of stay. So we know John Salino and we knew this at seven, right? At seven.
Just introduced.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's going anywhere.
Um-
Oh, look at that. I'm riding the curb. I don't know. I think that's dangerous.
Okay.
We can look it up and see what it says.
So I'm, I'm over here on minimum nights of stay, okay. Um, and your action item. Let's look at that action item that you had there to advance our little conversation.
In number three?
Yes, we're in number three, action item. So you, you went back to the conversation about STRs and LTRs.
Oh, my action item here on this was, are we going to lump together all rentals? Or are we saying short-term rentals and long-term rentals are two different animals?
Well, at a minimum, we need to do what we did at the beginning of this whole thing, which is come up, you know, at least know what we're generally talking about with short-term rentals. So we've used that definite, that state definition of under thirty days. I mean, just as a way, we, we know that it varies and it varies in, in regulations we've seen by other towns, et cetera, et cetera. But that has been our kind of, an agreed-upon definition, just so we can have conversation about how we view, view the topic. And more often than not, that under thirty days is the definition I've seen in all the regulations we've looked at. There's a couple that use twenty-one days. We know we have John Salino's community at Black Point that has the seven-day approach. But generally speaking, you don't see the tiny amount of days, you know what I'm saying? You don't, I don't know if I've seen like a three-day. Has anyone seen a three-day definition? You know?
I have a three-day minimum.
You have a three-day minimum. But I mean, definitionally, you're, you know, someone rented your place for ten days. You weren't, it's not that, you know, I mean, it's the same rental, I mean, you know?
You see, it, it might be a needless complication because I was struck by what Dan said.
Okay.
We were, we're charged to look at short-term rentals, so.
Yeah, okay, all right. Um, and again, I think the, the paper, the, the initial report does talk about the state definition, the occupancy tax and how that's applied and the definition there. And then, but there are, there are variations depending on the circumstances, you know? Different towns have decided on slightly different things. Anne, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify the X under my name, under three day. That was for mixed use or commercial. The, the thirty day was for residential.
I see. Okay, thirty day minimum. Right, gotcha. So this is for residential. All right, so we won't, we won't belabor that particular one then, okay? We can move on. And that can, that can be all integrated in other con, in other provisions in the writing. Permitting process. What did we have here for the action item?
I would say this about this whole section here.
On the permitting process?
Yeah.
What are you doing, sir? You're just identifying the fact that it's acceptable definition of thirty days or less or short-term and thirty days or more or long-term.
Or, or longer term, you know, that's, yeah, and, and leaving it at that.
So you're not gonna get down any numbers under thirty?
No, yeah, I think that gets-
One, three, seven, ten.
No, I think that's just, I mean, I understand John's kingdom, you know, in the way he's, he's kind of figured it all out. But I, I just think it's really hard to do that, you know? It's so limiting. It's very limiting. And if you look at, at least programs, success, successful, but, you know, ordinances and zoning, in particular zoning, that's, that's been passed by other towns, it, it's gen, it's, they use the state definition. They have this, this dividing line. So we'll kinda stick with that, knowing that there's variations. Okay, so for, Dan, you started about permitting.
I mean, just the fact that we're not supposed to be really trying to decide what to do with long-term rentals? Some of these line, I would say like permits required for LTRs. Are we even supposed to be speaking to that?
Um-
I'm not sure why we're mentioning those here.
Well, this kind of-
Three different lines.
I know, this kind of changes.
Not, I guess it doesn't matter. No one voted for that.
Nobody voted for it, right?
Yeah, right, right.
I guess for the fourth one, where some people voted for it, I was just changing that line to say permits for STRs, safety inspections.
Where are you, sir?
He's on the second page on-
I thought we were on the, I thought we'd moved on to the second page.
Yeah, we're on the second page, permitting process, question, set of questions. Um-
I mean, I don't think we're here to discuss whether we're gonna set up permits for long-term rentals, right? That's not part of our-
Correct, yeah.
But it's part, it's part of WIBI.
What the council asked us to do.
It's part of WIBI and it therefore brings us together with that.
You're starting to sound like Gary Cuccello.
I think we, huh?
Said he's starting to sound like Gary Cuccello. I mean, no, Dan, we just, I agree with Paul's, you know, WIBI basically said you can't really delineate between short and long-term just arbitrarily. And really, there's nothing wrong with us recommending to the Board that they might wanna look at long-term rental permits.
Okay.
Because they're not, they don't have to do anything, we tell them. We're just making recommendations.
Yeah. I mean, I think we can handle this the way we're handling our other questions when long-term rentals come up, you know?
Well, yeah, what you might say, if we are recommending permitting for STRs, to me, it kind of begs the question, well, what about long-term rentals? Are you gonna have permits for those too? But I think you can just ask that as a question because we are, as Dan has pointed out, we're not charged to do anything with long-term rentals. We were charged to look at short-term rentals.
I don't have, I don't mind having a parentheses after we explain what we think we should do for permitting for short-term to say, hey, now that we've done this for short-term, we should-
Think about this as well.
Think about it for, to extend it to long-term. I don't, I don't know, but seems like our focus, our focus should be much shorter.
We can't care about the health and safety of people that visit under thirty days and not care if they visit at thirty-one over.
I don't care about either one.
But my point is-
I mean, it's, it's a point, something they're gonna have to grapple with. But they put us in a box, you know, they did put us in the, in the box and that's the way we proceeded. Because, you know, in terms of, you know, I did not, I didn't, you know, I haven't heard a wealth of information about long-term rentals and we didn't ask for it either. We asked for commentary about short-term rental owners to come and talk to us, short-term rental neighbors to short-term rentals, et cetera. So that, so we're, I think our hands are a little bit tied. We should point out where this would be appropriate, you know? And that we do see parity, we do see overlap. And that we do see parity, we do see overlap, but, yeah.
And the zoning regulations are silent, so if we're gonna do zoning and ordinance, it has to be addressed.
Yeah, I think it does have to be addressed. It's just that we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna get in, into the weeds on that topic of long-term rentals as much as we would with short-term rentals, just because we haven't studied it.
That's how I got to the shortcut of, a rental's a rental.
Yeah.
Let's, let's.
We'll talk about commercial rentals at this point.
Yeah, and so for example, like, when we went forth and, and researched, you know, ten, twelve communities within the state, in particular in our, in our area, southeastern Connecticut, and we looked at those regulations, we weren't at the same time looking to see how they treated long-term rentals. Sometimes certain things would be apparent, like it might, occasionally came up with all rentals and some, something. I can't even remember where, I know I've seen it, but it may not have been, and what we actually researched and used in our paper for those dozen or so communities. So, yeah, I, I would be, I would be wary of going down that path, you know, so.
I know I started this whole conversation, but looking at the data here.
Yes.
Looks like there's not much to discuss. It seems like pretty much everybody's in favor of having a permit, right? There was just one no permit, Gary.
So the only thing.
Everybody else's permit, and the only difference is this odd line at the end that says one permit allowed per individual, which.
Which really belongs in the cap area.
What's that?
It, it, I say it belongs in the cap area.
So let's actually.
So I would say that if we asked this question over again.
Put that in that conversation.
The majority of us would be saying permits with safety inspections.
Yeah. And then, I agree with that, and that can be, yeah, we can pull that in where, when, in the conversation of if we choose to limit them, the caps are one way, the one permit scenario is another way, et cetera, et cetera. And then Paul, you have this point about registration versus permits. Do you want to elaborate while you?
I would just disagree with the whole permit, you know, because that indicates you're going to a zoning officer, going to a fire marshal, going somewhere to get a permit, where a registration is identifying all of the information that we are all concerned about. Who lives there, who owns it, who, you know, where is it, what's going on? Zoning can talk about whether it's allowed or not allowed, but the fact that you have to go in and get a permit, that means there's gonna be fees, there's gonna be all kinds of, of opportunity, which I don't, I don't think are necessary for this. I don't think, I don't think they help, this, what we're trying to do.
So I would argue that a permit system not only gives you an idea of how big or little the problem is, it also gives you another tool to be used in the instance where there is repeat offense by the landlords.
I one hundred percent agree that a permit can be pulled. A registration, I guess it could still be pulled, but so what if it is?
Yeah, there's no, there's really not a remedy that they would if you violate an ordinance requiring the permit, or you violated a permit because zoning requires it. Yeah, I see it as a tool as well. I, I see permitting, however elaborate you want to make it or not, as a tool of control. It may control numbers, if numbers are your priority and you want to keep those numbers level or steady. It may help to that end, I don't have data on that, but, you know, you don't want to make it so onerous that you're gonna be sued over it. But on the other hand, you know, you want some control, and what you're looking for is information. What you seem to be looking for, and what we've stated, if you start looking at the annual rental permit information, the next topic, are the safety inspections. That seems to be of general concern, right? Safe, the safety inspections.
Well, that one and the basic name contact.
Yes, as I said, the contact, right, contact information, yes. But, um.
And to me, being in a community with a lot of homes right next to each other, the permitting process, to be able to say how many people can actually stay there, and how many vehicles can be used at that particular rental are valuable. And it's one of the things, a lot of people come to me and talk to me about at Crest Beach.
So what I did to that end, I just want to tell you that I went back and looked at our, at our report from, from the spring. And I think it was on, I probably just wrote it in my notes. So take, if you take a look at the report on page, that was, two, 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 pages seven to eight in our report, that actually had, lists out the areas when you're gonna do a permit, you know, and not, you're not gonna get in the weeds, but here's the basic stuff that you see all the time. So, yeah, I have it here, I pulled it out. There's some method here tonight, a little madness. Yeah, so, um, areas, I think it was, it's more that it was maybe section eight, yes. Yes, it's section eight, page fourteen. So make a note of that, because at the bottom of page fourteen in our, of our report, in addition to location, because we discussed the whole thing about different zoning districts, you know, Anne's points, we're in that previous paragraph, the next paragraph says, in addition to location, there are a number of other restrictions and requirements that communities have imposed on short-term rentals, commonly referred to as permitting. These often begin with registration and a fee, requiring an owner's or designated agent's contact information, and further that this individual will be available twenty-four seven in the event of emergencies or complaints. Regulations usually restrict the type of dwelling unit, occupancy, parentheses, number of guests, and duration of stay. Use and noise restrictions, such as prohibiting events, parties, et cetera, are also typical. Unaccompanied minors, no-go, right? Sufficient onsite parking spaces are likely to be required. Fire, safety, health, and/or building inspections are addressed and may be mandatory or optional, we've seen that. Zoning site plan or special permit approvals may also be necessary. So I remember in the composition of that paragraph that, that, you know, going, going back to everything we had seen, and sort of trying to summarize, okay, this is what it looks like. So those are your, you know, we can reiterate some of that in this, if, if you're gonna permit, these are some of the things, you know, that you can permit. And you've covered most of them here, Gary, in your questions, right?
Yep.
You've covered it in the permit info, occupancy, noise, and parking. So, um, let me just see if I have anything else. Occupancy.
I'm, I'm just a little leery about permits.
Yeah, that's.
Because I'm going through a situation where we're trying to get a permit for a different shape of an umbrella, and we can't do it, it's been months. So to open up another permitting possibility, just, doesn't seem to be, you know?
Yeah.
Unless it's extraordinarily specific, which you're never gonna be, you're just gonna add to the problems that we're seeing existing now. So that's why I think registration is a better opportunity.
So let me ask you this, then. Okay, so.
And I'll talk to you about the umbrella thing if you want to know outside of here.
All right. Um, let me ask you this, so are you in, are you in agreement with our first question in this, in this survey that we need to, we need to limit short-term rentals or not?
Well, I put a number on a limit, but I don't know whether that's.
So, okay, so you did a cap approach, okay. So you would be in agreement with that, okay. And then, are there other things you'd want to control with STRs? So like, do you want them to be, I mean, I know we talked about noise, and everyone here was about, okay.
I'm okay to be the only one that disagrees with that.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's okay. All right.
We're okay with that too.
Because you are.
Okay.
Some of these are like, hard to enforce, like number of beds, how do you know if someone's gonna roll in a cot and put it up? I mean, you're not gonna be going there every day.
It's more number of bedrooms, yeah.
And, and the bedrooms, I think, Anne, you made the connection that it's based on the assessors, what's, what's on record with the assess.
Yeah.
The field card?
Yes, mm-hmm. But, um, okay, so, um, there are a couple of these that I think, you know, we definitely are not that interested in, like, listing the rental services that you've advertised on, things like that. I think those are intrusive, I mean, all those kinds of things are really.
It was, that was just pulled from our survey of other communities.
I mean.
I don't think very many people put that down, did they?
No.
Yeah.
That was a blank, actually, no one, no one.
And the site plan and floor plan, that's nice, but those are already in the town hall. You already have that information.
On the field card.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, yeah, for sure. I think, are we of the opinion that we would want, are we of a general opinion, that, that we would want more of like, a de minimis permitting, you know, information, we're not really looking to be intrusive or onerous in any way? Is that, is that overstating?
I, I would say that what you read to us out of the existing report more than covers what we need to consider for a permit.
Those are topics, like, if we're making a recommendation, those are topics that typically have been covered, some more, some less, but that's, that kind of.
Now it's up to the Board of Selectmen to decide which of those.
To figure that out.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
If they want to implement the one about the type of umbrella shape, then they can go for it.
Apparently they already have.
I'm hoping your hearing's turned off.
Well, I think we can say everyone pretty much agrees with one, two, and nine.
Yes.
And then which of the ones in between are up for discussion.
Yes.
And I'm okay with not doing the ones in between, because I see, the only reason I said we should be interested in the number of bedrooms is because of occupancy, but we have that covered down below, so, yeah.
And I only mentioned the signed affidavit, just because I'd like people to own up to what they're, you know? This, I like that agreement concept, you know, we're giving you the permit, and you agree, and, and you're swearing that this is all true. You're complying. I, I just like that formality, that's just a formality, and that's not, you know, critical to the, to the topic. And then occupancy, I had nothing in particular on occupancy. We seem to be all in agreement on, I think, that first one, and that last one, and I think that's in your summary too, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
I would recommend, though, that this one stipulation, that's the last one in the permitting process.
Yes.
Which is one permit allowed per individual, party, or entity.
Oh, that, that up there.
That's really speaks more to a cap.
Yes, I put that, yes, as a cap, yes. I think that can go in that conversation of kind of direct.
That can go in section two.
Yeah, I mean, and that's kind of like direct control or limitation, ways to directly limit it. You know, again, I, I view the permitting system as a, a good public safety thing, obviously, but I also view it as a way of control, in that it's another step, it is a little hoop you have to go through in order to be the short-term rental owner. Noise, I think we, everyone was in agreement totally on, you know, applying the noise ordinance, and even John Salino, it was, he, he mentioned, I think he meant the sound meters.
Right.
Right, so I think we're all in agreement on that. I also, you know, through, and I would be in, I guess, a minority, about trying to control events at the STRs. And I did that just because it, it just seemed like such a common complaint, and such a, you know, such an issue. And I did see it in a number of sets of regulations, so that's the only reason why I put that in there. In fact, I remember Attorney Pelosi, in his presentation that I listened to ahead of the WIBI decision, he said, you know, people really, aren't really adverse to STRs too much, it's the party houses they can't stand, and the noise, you know, and the related stuff that happens with that. So that's what I was thinking there. But it seems like, I think we were, as a group, we've spoken, I'm the outlier, wanting that extra layer, I think. But I don't know if anyone else had a thought about that.
I, I don't think the permit is gonna change the noise. I think if people are intent on renting it to the extent that Greg's problem has in his neighborhood, to put twenty people in there, they, they don't care if the permit says three-bedroom, or park on the street, or don't park in the yard, or park wherever you want.
No, I know.
Make some noise.
Yeah.
That's why I think the permit thing is kind of not necessary, because it's people that are not gonna pay attention to the rules don't care about signing a permit or an affidavit or anything else, but.
So that'll.
But the permit doesn't have anything to do with the noise. The noise is gonna be done by regulation, right?
Where it's.
It's called out.
The noise ordinance exists, so if you have a problem with noise, you call the cops, and they come now. So we don't have to do anything about that, that already exists.
Well, it's not in our annual permit information.
But it's already in ordinance.
I hear you, I'm, I'm agreeing.
All people gotta do is make a phone call and say, come, we got a noise, and, and to the both chiefs' points about the noise meters, or, you know, it's three hundred dollars to, you know, to, what's the word? Calibrate it.
Calibrate it, and then you have to be educated about it and trained.
So even if we got them meters, it's not gonna, that has to be a practical application, where the cop hears, hey, you're out of control, or the neighbor's across the street saying, you know, we couldn't sleep, you know? So the cop says, hey, knock it off, if I come back, there's gonna be trouble. So noise and parking kind of take care of themselves, I think, you know?
Yeah, but they're not part of the permit issue. So to draw this into why we should or shouldn't have a permit, to me, isn't even a conversation.
Because if the owners are fine, they might.
Our permit application has nothing to do with you're promising not to make noise. It doesn't say.
My point was that you can have a permit for everybody, but you're not gonna control noise and parking.
Listen to me, the permit does not say, don't make any noise. We're not looking for the permit to keep people quiet.
On this, practically speaking, on, on Main Street or wherever these things exist, that's what's gonna happen.
I would bet, I would hazard a bet that we could find an app that you could put on your iPhone or your, or your other phone that will measure noise in decibels, for a lot less than three hundred bucks a pop.
Oh.
But I think the police are saying that they can't press charges against anybody unless they do it in accordance with what the state has set up, which says you can't bring that to court unless it's been calibrated, blah, blah, blah.
But there's so many ways in the common law that, that, you know, when, when there's a breach of peace, I mean, there's, there's a number of ways. Disturbance, so we don't have to rely solely on the noise ordinance, it's just that it's another tool in the toolbox that actually is not being used, and we've tried to advance that, that argument in our presentation, Gary and I, to the Board of Selectmen, like, let's, let's get that going, and to the, to the police department as well, that there's no reason why that can't be activated. You know, you need to get the sound meter, and you need to just get one or two people in the department trained, you know?
Remember, the meeting was supposed to get back to us on looking into.
Right, correct. If they had, and we hadn't heard back, so we could revisit that request again, you know, again. But, um, but yeah, there's, I mean, yeah, the police respond and use every tool they've got in terms of, you know, the common law and statutory.
I was wrong, it's not one, there's ten. There's ten different apps on here on how to measure noise levels.
Yeah, okay.
But this, this conversation we're having, to me, is why you want a permit as opposed to a registration. Because a permit has some teeth, and for a bad actor who's repeatedly warned, if you yank the permit, that bad actor's out of business. And that would give me, as a citizen, not as a member of this committee, that would give me some peace of mind if I had a short-term rental miscreant.
And, and Anne, you were just about to talk about fining the owner, like in the case of violations that are not remedied, right? Is that where you're going with that? And that we've seen, and that's another topic that's not here, but that's certainly something we've seen.
I just thought if, if these things happen over and over again, and the owner's fine, they might be more careful who they rent it out to.
Right.
Yeah, so you can do that, and you can do that fining, I have to refresh my recollection, through the, or, through an ordinance, as well as through zoning, because zoning can also do that. So, um, okay. So, um.
Parking?
Parking, so, um, oh, was there a change in the question presented, like, the first? So we had enforced existing parking regulations, and I think in a previous iteration of this, we had a different question.
Yes, I, I deleted some, just for formatting purposes, that got no votes.
Okay, okay.
Just like there was no originally enforced noise, noise ordinance, that was not an official one, but everybody wanted it.
Everyone wanted it, right. Everyone wanted it, right, and good point, yes, point taken, okay.
I think we need to be clear on that, that when we're talking about no parking on the street, we're talking about things in residential neighborhoods, we're not talking about somebody renting a place up on Main Street.
Right, so I think that's true.
Commercial.
And that, well, that would also help the second, that enforce existing parking regulations, because that would definitely be in a, like, let's say it was a mixed-use commercial zone, you know, or anywhere, you'd have, you know.
Yeah, that replaced the one that said you can have one vehicle on the street. But nobody opted for that, so I just.
Okay, so you got rid of that one, so you deleted that, okay. I mean, again, that was a whole nother section in this report on parking and utilizing the, and that I want to bring this up. So, we need to collect, start collecting fines under that parking ordinance that we have. I just do not understand that.
But you heard what the guy said here, right?
Yes, I'm just saying that it's time to start doing that.
If you choose not to pay, we're not gonna come and ask you for your money.
I do not comprehend that, so, you know, if you have it on the books.
Wish I would've known that sixteen years ago. Taken it from my house the first week I owned the house.
So, I don't know how you all feel about it, but I just feel like we have a good parking ordinance that specifies, you know, where it applies, what it applies to, a set of fines that are reasonable fines and aren't outrageous. So, let's apply it, and it would definitely help some of these more difficult situations, I think. So, that would be my advice, that would be my advice to the town. And that's if you wanna review that at some point, there'll be plenty of time, you know, by the time I get to that topic in the report.
You have to go to the Police Commission.
No, I know, yeah.
The road has to be narrow enough to justify it.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, that would have to be the issue.
It's on page seven of our, seven to eight of our report, the parking ordinance. So I just feel as though, besides our feeling, it's a very unanimous feeling.
You didn't have as many rentals as I before, sorry.
That's okay. As far as parking goes, we are unanimous in this, pretty much on this, you know, or at least there's a majority on no parking on the street, I think that was expressed. And then.
Well, that was a majority opinion.
Yes.
I think there was a minority of us that were like, you know, let's enforce the current parking.
Yes, and I think that includes, you know, get those, collect fines. I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that in there and you'll see it in print, if you hate it, you can chat with me then. Okay, then we're down to the last topic, which is the annual permit and inspection fees, like, different approaches. And, I don't know, I just do a little quick diagramming of myself here and for myself here. So much of this, of course, depends on.
What they choose to do.
What you choose to do, how you choose to do it, and then, but.
I don't know who said it last week, but I'm in agreement. You're either gonna go minimum, there's no middle ground here, right? If you don't go minimum and you're gonna have permits and you're gonna be monitoring it, you're not gonna be able to get away with the moderate because it's gonna take a lot of time from somebody to do more than minimum.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that it also goes to compliance. If you have minimum enforcement.
Yeah, I think that's a problem.
I think you're gonna have a lower percentage of compliance than if you have more investment in infrastructure. The other thing I should, there was almost unanimous opinion for safety inspections, but the unfortunate wording on minimum says no inspections, so.
That's why I didn't do that one.
That was, again, on me, I should've.
Okay, so I'm gonna cross out that, that's still possible there. Yeah, because I'm thinking of that, I went back today and actually looked at our minutes when Fire Marshal Bundy and Deputy Eric Quinn came to speak to us. And I think they made the case, you know, very strongly about fire inspections. So, I think that's an important public safety thing. I mean, if you make them, make these inspections voluntary, the only sort of bite you can have is saying, okay, we'll certify you and then you can put that on your, you know, your advertisement or something like that. But they may, you know, in truth, that may not be sufficient if your concern is, you know, whereas Fire Marshal said, where you lay your head and let's try to have a safe, you know, if these are basically mini, mini hotels, mini motels, then we should be thinking about that. So, you know. Yeah, I'm, any thoughts on, on, and we, at one point, we also discussed a long time ago about the cost of, of trying to have, you know, enforcement, which means that you may have to add staff, materials, this, that, and the other. So it does become a cost issue and, you know, manpower issue. So, whatever you're charging, this is what I was thinking previously, whatever you're charging, if you're charging a permitting fee, then that's got to somehow offset, you know, try to offset, you know. I know that the, that the amounts that the Fire Marshal, I don't know, the town charges for inspections are geared to try to offset those costs, because I think I was sitting on Board of Selectmen when those were, those were created. And the analysis was to try to, okay, if you're gonna pay this person so much money and, you know, this is the salary and a portion of their, a portion of their work is dedicated to doing these inspections, then we should be charging this and looking at other towns and what they charge. So.
Yeah, I think in this issue, the question is how robust do you want the administration oversight and compliance to be?
Okay.
If you have a robust system, there is a person who, no matter if you have a grievance or you have a question, there's a person you can go to. There's a person who can say, you're out of compliance with your permit or you don't have a permit, therefore, we're shutting you down.
I mean, enforcement, once we take, once we suggest and the town takes action, okay, this committee, it suggests whatever, and the town takes action, enforcement is just going to be an issue, right? And you've gotta have some teeth, and we've heard that, we've heard that over and over again. We've heard it from Beach community leaders who say, if you're gonna do this, you gotta, you gotta set up something that has some teeth. And even if you take, even if you do a partial ban and you're grandfathering in, you still have to set up something.
That's an administrative headache.
Yeah, I mean, that's just another, you know, it's definitely, you are not off the hook. So whatever, you know, the town decides to do, this is a component. You try to keep costs down, but you also have to, you know, try to achieve your objectives, right? So, it's, whether it's adding staff or whatever. And you can farm this stuff out, which is a whole nother topic, and I've looked at some of those prices and it's expensive.
Enforcement is a budget issue.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it is.
But I agree with Gary and Dan, I'm gonna change my vote to muscular, so.
To what?
To muscular, to the big one.
I had minimum because I was, I'm thinking more that if, you know, in my mind, if we're doing this more limited, you know, grandfathering and all this other business, but I, you know, I think if we just kinda have generic concepts of minimum and moderate and muscular, I have to go more towards muscular as well because I don't see how you, I kind of agree. It's hard to, without teeth, if muscular means having teeth, I think.
Robust.
Robust, okay, robust, okay.
You talk about enforcement under minimum. Enforcement is mentioned.
Yes.
I think we should eliminate the dollar things, those are arbitrary numbers. Yeah, I would completely agree with you, I was just trying to give examples there. No, no, of muscularity, right?
Yes.
That's a word, I'm not sure if that's a word.
It is now.
Yeah.
Minimum, moderate, and badass.
You're mentioning enforcement everywhere, so.
I know.
It's really gonna depend on who's sitting in this seat.
Yes.
Whether they wanna put another zoning person in or another Fire Marshal in.
Yes.
And then you never guarantee that the money coming in from one permit goes to support the enforcement of that violation.
Right, correct, right, oh, exactly.
It could go anywhere else and not see, so.
So, and maybe instead of having us, you know, sort of limited by minimum, moderate, and muscular, do you wanna just express that we agree that we need to have the appropriate enforcement mechanisms? They have to have teeth, they have to have a way of, you know, pulling a permit or a cease and desist or whatever. And fees can be determined at the time of, they're all gonna vary, right? Depending on what year this is gonna happen in. But we need to have enforcement that works, effective enforcement, so.
You can't, you can't set up a program, whatever they decide to set up. You can't set up the program saying, okay, you gotta have a permit to do this.
Yeah.
And then you have a resident, somebody just had a party, they call the noise, they came and did it, they go to Town Hall and say, hey, is there a permit for this property to do that? And they say, no, and then you make a complaint, the guy says, well, we didn't, we don't have anybody to go look into that.
Yeah, yeah, you don't want that situation, yeah, I think you.
We can't start off that way.
If we're going through the whole, you know, process of doing something about short-term rentals because we have X, Y, Z concerns and we set up a system to either control or limit or do something, you've got to, that's got to be, that's the mirror, that's the other side of all that, you know, so.
You just have to enforce whatever the regulations.
Right, right, so I'm of a mind of changing this a little bit, just changing the minimum to muscular and just saying, you know, find those appropriate and effective enforcement that isn't gonna bankrupt the town. You know, you don't wanna, you know, overspend on it. But, because it's hard to say, and it should mirror whatever regulations you do enact, there should be the flip side, is that regulation could be enforced by this process.
For the amount of violations that came before us, the amount of complaints that people have on houses and apartments and short-term rentals, it's been, you can count on one hand the number that has come here. So the existing budget could handle enforcement of those five or four, three or two or six complaints.
So.
We just haven't heard that there's a problem to hire another.
Yeah.
Cop or another zoning or another Fire Marshal or another, you know. Fire Marshal, maybe if you're gonna inspect every long-term and short-term rental, you might need somebody else.
Then that's gonna need some help.
That's why I didn't put muscular, I don't think you'd use a full-time person.
Okay, and.
Maybe part-time.
Well, the permitting process is going to be a time suck, for sure. Just corralling all those people and getting the permits in and issued and everything.
I mean, in a couple of conversations I've had through the last many months on short-term rentals with our zoning officer, Mr. Maholland, he has suggested to me that this is something they can handle there and they can handle in-house, there might be some additional hours or personnel required, but it, you know, it didn't seem it was like over the top. Now, I don't know if that's wishful thinking or not, but I mean, that was said a couple of times to me. Just like I think, Greg, you had spoken to the Fire Marshal and he thought he could handle. Oh, you did?
Gary did, yeah, but he said, he agreed to.
Can you reiterate that and review that?
He said he's got, he's got the staff to handle it.
Because he's not the only one doing those fire inspections.
We've got a range here of a hundred and twenty to two hundred that are currently in place. He said he could handle it, he might have to take one of his part-time people and give her more hours, he said, but he said they could do it. Why don't you just take minimum, moderate, muscular terms out and pick what line items you want from the top to the bottom?
That's what I was thinking, like, we shouldn't.
And then you don't have to worry about identifying.
Yeah, okay.
Just what do you want, what do you wanna see happen?
Good point, good point.
Based on the problems you perceive exist.
Okay. Well, we. I mean, you want.
I just know at Crescent Beach, we had an issue with a couple, we still have an issue with a couple of properties that are rundown, no one's living there, they're paying their taxes.
Okay.
But they're boarded up, they're overgrown, and the town put into effect, I forget what the right name is for that type of property, what's it called?
Blighted.
What's it?
Blighted property.
Blighted property. You come here to the town and it's like, yeah, they started a program and it's mine, but I already had a job, so I don't have time for blighted property, I can't help you, type of thing. And if that's what the town is planning on doing, I mean, we just need them to be aware of that.
Yeah.
I think the Granicus Report said that many towns that try and put in permitting, I forget what it's permitting or register, said that it turns into a bigger effort than they thought. Now, they're talking about bigger towns like San Jose and this and that.
Sure, sure.
But the same thing could happen here, right? Oh, yeah, we can handle it, and then they can't.
Well, I think we could, you know, I think in writing this section, we, I think it's sufficient to make that connection between what you require and permitting is gonna need enforcement. Every single element of it's gonna need some enforcement or have that system set up and it's gonna be a cost likely to you, and they need to do that analysis. They need to, you know, they need to figure out how much an annual permit fee would be and so forth. But I think some of this, we, some of this discussion is already in this report. I think the section on enforcement covered a lot of that. But that's a kind of, once they decide what they're doing specifically, then I think they have to mirror the enforcement. Okay, so, I think we've covered most things today. So I was thinking, this is my, let's find my last page here. Yeah, I was thinking that we could move on to our, let's find my agenda here in all of this.
Here you go.
Thank you. Timeline, so, I think we have a reasonably good, you know, set of recommendations, partial recommendations, gleaned from previous report, new information, this, all the survey and so forth. So I think the writing can begin, and I would say, I would say, looking at calendar here, next Monday, it happens to be holiday Martin Luther King Day, but I was thinking perhaps on the twenty-seventh of January, we could meet again with at least what, what's been written, you know, ahead of that, I mean, it would be, you know, we would circulate something to everyone.
It would work for me.
It would work for you, okay, so how does that look, the twenty-seventh?
So, what are you saying, review a draft that comes out and speak to the draft on the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, you know, we might as well just get the ball rolling.
Is there enough time for you?
It's, it's good enough for me to, to, to just start the writing and cover what you've covered. As like I said, I've gotta pick up where Whaby left off and, and I'm open to, I'm also open to, certainly to how you want it to look. I mean, I don't, it does not need to, you know, certainly be of this length, right? We covered a lot of stuff in here, plus all the exhibits, this is just the, this is just the text. But format might look the same to keep it similar, but it's final recommendations. And I was thinking of trying not to repeat ourselves, you know. Obviously, you have to refer back to this and I have to make a sort of editorial decision from time to time, how much do I wanna refer back and how much do I just wanna repeat, you know, just for writing's sake. But, you know, I don't think we need to revisit every topic, you know. So I think that's enough time to get it going, you know, and to get, even if it's not every recommendation. But we just get moving on it, and what I write, I write and hope I don't have writer's block.
So your idea. So your idea is to get a draft to us in advance of the meeting?
Yes, yes.
And we come to the meeting.
And just say, okay.
Loaded for bear.
Yeah, and yeah, loaded for bear. It's okay. I'll be, I'll wear my helmet.
That has.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, yeah, it's fine. I mean, I'm just gonna try to capture, certainly, wherever we agree, will be, will be highlighted. And where we don't, you know, that's, that's the more difficult area. But it's not that, it's, you know, it's to be expected.
So are we good? Is it, is it the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, I think twenty-seventh. And I actually, I gave that date to Gary.
I don't know that I'm good that day. I don't, I have a flight. I'm not sure what time the flight is.
Okay. Oh, you have a flight returning? Okay. All right. You can still, you can still, yeah, because you can still, you can, you know, write, you know, write a set of, you know, whatever you like and submit it or something, sure. Okay. But I think to get the process going, and I'll try to capture last week's meeting, this week's meeting, which we got a little more specific, I think, right? I think we had more specificity and clarity. And that's all I really want. You know, you can't capture everything, but I think this is pretty good. Okay, so we'll do that. And then we'll take it from there. So that's our next meeting. And we won't book anything else out. We just gotta get to that point, which is a critical point. Okay, any last comments, anything like that? And feel free to email me if there's, you know, if you go back and look at something, think about something, just send it. And, you know, you can label it draft. If there's something you think you want included, you know, just even verbiage that, or a thought that is really critical to all this, then just, just send it, you know, it's fine.
Are we going to decide a public hearing date tonight?
I don't think we, we will yet. I think on the twenty-seventh, because we, in terms of a number of days broke between, between us coming up with the draft, because we actually have to have a draft set of recommendations that then is submitted with this public notice for that, for the public hearing, correct? Yeah, so what's our, what's our timeline for that? Like, from the notice to the actual? It's, I'm sort of remembering fifteen, too. I've gotta look. Yeah, and that was more than sufficient.
Fifteen months?
No, fifteen days. So, but once we, once we know when we're gonna have that draft complete, then, then you can just do it at that point. Yeah, I think it might be less than that, but we've used that fifteen days as a, as a safe amount of time to allow for notice. So we're good. Because I'm sure there's gonna be about that much time, you know, available for us once we review this draft. Okay. All right, so no one will see me for two weeks, but it's okay. All right, so that works, I think. We'll leave it at the twenty-seventh so that we can get rolling. And I would not be, even though we have a holiday next week, I would not be producing this next Monday night, yeah. So, all righty. So any other comments, thoughts?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, move to adjourn. We have a motion and a second by Dan here. And I'll say hi. Okay, great.